I don't know what they're starting with. I have some more. You need a haircut. Isn't that a home job there? That you're sorting? Mine too.
Yeah, I don't, I just, if there's any home in one of your homes, I just thought there might be a cloud.
If, if this gets annoying, let me know, I can take off because I got a lead on it.
Okay, yeah, if you want to take a seat.
You need a haircut. Isn't that a home job there? That you're sorting? Yeah? Mine too.
I'm missing Marlene. Thumb drive? On the ground or in your car?
This is my car.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't know if the council's adopted any rules.
I think Andrew might be calling.
Did you have extras, Andrew? May I have one?
Are we ready?
I'm not responsible on the what this thing is doing.
It is six oh one, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone remember to turn your microphones on and turn your cell phones off, and we'll have roll call.
Mayor Schoenberger. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Vane. Councillor Baker. Councillor Becker. Councillor Dykes. Councillor Quinlan. Everyone has a copy of the minutes of the regular meeting of January eleventh.
Are there any corrections? Hearing none, they stand approved as submitted. Visitors and delegations, anybody here who wants to speak about something not on the agenda, so that's not marijuana. Now's the time. All right. Moving on to number five, management, retail marijuana decision and options. Karen, you'll get us out.
Sure. At your last council work session, you were provided a timeline that provided, and some background information. So you had some history in terms of the evolution of the topic of marijuana, both the medical and retail throughout the state of Colorado. And then that little refresher that for the past two and a half years, the city of Brush has had a moratorium in place regarding retail marijuana sales and growth, those types of things. And that moratorium is set to expire on June thirtieth of this year. And so in order to have adequate staff time to prepare whatever it is that council would like done around this topic, we need a decision from council here this evening, so staff has adequate time to work on those items. So in your memo this evening and at your last work session, we talked about three options that have been identified. The first is to refer to the November eighth, twenty sixteen election ballot question or questions regarding marijuana cultivation facilities, product manufacturing facilities, testing facilities, and retail marijuana stores. There's an additional sub option there, and that would be to include ballot questions related to imposing additional local taxes on retail marijuana sales. The section, second option is to adopt ordinances and regulations that govern the time, place, and manner and number of establishments, all those same categories. And associated with that is also that option of sending a question to the ballot imposing additional local taxes on retail marijuana. And then the third option presented to you is to adopt an ordinance prohibiting marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail marijuana stores. So what staff needs from council tonight is hopefully identifying one of these three options that you would like to direct staff to begin work on for you.
Thank you. We'll now open it up for discussion. We had planned to limit it to one hour, but I think that'll be fine, seeing the group here with that. So whoever wants to talk about it, come step up to the podium, tell us your name and your address, and we're going to limit it to three minutes each.
And I have the sign up sheet, if you would mind signing your name in, please.
I'll be the first. My name is Dan Scalisi, and my address is two twenty Custer Street here in Brush. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present my opinion to Mr. Mayor, councillors, city staff, and the visitors. I was aboard as mayor and council when we first put the moratorium on. We put it on because we didn't feel marijuana was what we wanted to have grown or sold in Brush. And I know it's been a number of years since we did that, and you have to make a decision. But I would hope that, you know, out of your three options, my feeling is it should go to the people to make that decision because they live here. But I also know that this body has had the opportunity to research or have provided information to you through different sources of marijuana, the effects of it on not only the adults, but on the children. I understand that, you know, there have been children that, because marijuana is legal, it's not hidden anymore, and it's out for, left on the table or whatever, and children have the opportunity to consume it, either smoking it, or if it's edible, eating it. And I think it's a problem that will exist and get worse as time goes on. So I'd hope if, if you decide to either option one or option three, but certainly not option two, where you would regulate, put regulations on the use of it, the growing and the selling of it here in the city of Brush. And that's my comment, and I'll sign this.
Thank you.
Are we able to ask questions? Or any else want to question?
You're welcome to. Should you wait until everything is presented, and we will, is it for, for the presenter or for us to discuss?
Presenters. Are we going to be asking the presenters questions?
I hadn't planned on it. You know, if you feel you want to, you can. Is there any others?
Hi, my name's Brian Amack at three forty-nine Howell. I have kind of a question for you. The first one would be, does the city council get paid to go to meetings, stay in hotels, registration for meetings to better your knowledge on information like this?
Yes.
Okay. So, when you accepted this job, did you not accept all the things that went along with this job, including ordinances?
Yes, we did.
So, to hand it back to the people, I don't know everything that you've learned, so I don't know whether I would make the best decision. You guys have more education on that subject. I feel you're elected, you're part of the community, you guys should be the ones that make that decision. Otherwise, I would also like to make the decision on whether water rates go up, down, trash. I don't know enough about those, so I can't make them. That's what you're here for. I think you guys are professional citizens, you should be able to make that decision.
Any others?
Hi, I'm April Amack, I live at three forty-nine Howell, and I would like to thank the board for continuing the moratorium and reviewing the three options that were presented to them. I agree that, I think we elect our officials to help make board decisions, and that this is an ordinance that is normally decided upon by a board, and I would hope that you would decide tonight to prohibit the marijuana retail distribution and sales in our city. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm Alan Wend, and we have just recently chosen to move into the city limits of Brush. Maybe that's good news or bad news, depends on what you're thinking. But anyway, we took into consideration the all-American city, and we'd hate to see that turn into the all-American pot town. We've gotten along all these years without it, and I think we can succeed without going in that direction. So I'd hope the council would make the decision to ban it rather than the expense of, and confusion of an election. I think you have the authority to do it, I would hope you would exercise that authority in a nick vote and no vote. Thank you. I also wanted to say this is not an organized Howell street.
Any others?
Hi, I'm Kristy Mortensen, I'm at two six four eight seven County Road T, Brush, Colorado. I was born and raised in Brush, Colorado, and been pretty proud of living in the city of Brush, Colorado. And was also very much against, in the past when this came up, this last summer, I'm against the retail and production of marijuana within the city limits. I've worked in healthcare for the last twenty-five years, and I've worked at the Fort Morgan Hospital as well as in Brush. And as many of you know, one of the biggest problems we have in rural America is recruitment of physicians. And I've worked in a hospital, and recruiting physicians is extremely difficult. It's difficult to get people to come to a small community, let alone live in a small community. Currently at our hospital, they have worked really hard to recruit physicians over the last ten years. And at this moment, we have recruited numerous physicians and have a lot of our openings filled at the hospital. Most of those physicians commute, but currently, we do have some physicians who are moving into this community. And I think many of those physicians made that decision on knowing this was a safe community for their families. I think that that revolving door, retention of physicians is difficult, and I think we'll have a hard time recruiting, continuing to recruit physicians. And my concern is recruiting physicians to a town that they know grows and sells marijuana within the city limits. Especially if there are towns close by who do not do that. That is one of my biggest concerns, and it is a constant concern in the medical community. The next concern I have is I am currently on the DAC Committee for the District Accountability Committee for the school board. And one of our biggest topics of concern right now is retention, is recruiting and retention of teachers. And it's often, we can oft, I think we can, I think it would be very difficult to recruit teachers, to move their families to a town that allows the production and retail, retail of marijuana. I think when you look, if you're a teacher or a physician and you're looking at two towns where you would like to live, I don't know. If I had a family, I think I would pick a town that didn't have marijuana growing within its city limits and a retail shop within its city limits. If I was a doctor, I think that would come into my decision as well. And I think as a town, we want to promote people moving to this town who want to bring their families, who want to bring their children. And I think the image that retail marijuana and the production of marijuana has in a town is negative. I don't know if I've heard a positive comment about any town who's currently has that, has that production happening. I think that it's something that needs to be thought about carefully, and I personally think that we should pick C. I think the decision C would be the best to continue to hold the current moratorium in place and not allow the product, is it C or three?
Three.
Three, sorry, in place, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I apologize for being late. We're juggling a lot of balls right now, I think, between kids, family, and life. So, I'm a little behind, it sounds like you're considering the three options for the marijuana. Scott Dunn, sorry, one nine zero six three County Road twenty-six, Brush. I, I know what the three options are, I don't know what order you put them in. I think the easy way out would be to put it to the electorate. I think that would be kind of a, I'm not going to call it the coward's way out, but it would be the easy way out, to take the decision off of your shoulders and put it on someone else's. But you were voted in to do a job, and I think you were voted in because of your, the person you are. At least I hope you are. So, I believe the right decision is for the city council to make the decision and to make this an ordinance, that marijuana should not be legal here. And then I would also give a warning about those who argue that we're turning this into a moral argument. Morals and values cannot be separated from laws. If they were, we wouldn't have murder illegal for those who do evil things. They're just, I can name law after law that was formed because of morals. This country was formed off of moral values, and I don't think you can separate the two. So just beware of that and know where you live. We're in a place where we have morals that lean one way over another. And if you plan on staying here, I, I believe that the direction's clear on where the community would like you to go. And lastly, well, two more points. One, there are families who have moved already out of the state because of what we've done here. Good families, families from Brush who have left, gone to Wyoming, or Idaho, or Utah, to other states because of the direction our state is going. Let's not follow suit. Let's not follow down that path that, that chases good people away from our community. Lastly, there's, there's plenty of studies out there since marijuana has been legalized that show the good and bad, more bad from what happens when marijuana has been legalized. And I don't think there's any question, in my mind, you have those, you've seen them, you've studied them, hopefully, and know. And then, we can look at opposing towns that have done this. The examples I think of are Fort Morgan and Log Lane Village, Crested Butte and Gunnison, and the different directions that those cities go that legalize it versus those that don't. And I'd much rather live in the communities that don't, and I would support the decision to make this a law. Make that decision, that's what you were voted to do, and hopefully we can go down that road. Thank you.
Any others?
My name is Doug Crandall, I live at twenty-six oh five Rural Road in Brush. And I would like to see the ordinance pass that prevents any growing or distributing of marijuana in our city. I don't think it has a place in our community, and I would like to see the city council act in that direction. Thank you.
One last time. Anybody else, or are we done? Okay, thank you all. Thank you all for your comments. Now, discussion. What are people's opinions, what, what, what is your thoughts?
I have one thing I'd say. You know, at our work session, we talked about, you know, it's been eighteen months since the moratorium was put in place, and the thinking was that we may not have more information than the general public about the subject. And I thought about that later, and I thought, well, that's, that's really not true, because the conference that we went to had law enforcement present all of the things that they have seen with the law since it had been in place, and that had been, you know, probably a year. And I'm sure you've heard bits and pieces of the information through media sources, but we were able to, to see this thing laid out, just what law enforcement has seen so far. And so I'd like to go over some of the, some of the things that they saw. The statistics, the statistics are alarming. Here are some of the things that are happening. They show increased use by children, increased incidents where students are bringing marijuana to school, increased ER visits, small children, of small children ingesting marijuana, increased incidence of driving under the influence, increased risk of organized crime due to cash only businesses, increased mold issues in homes where marijuana is being grown, BHO extraction explosions, and an increase in disorder and quality of life offenses. So what they've seen, or what, what they showed us, that law enforcement has seen, is there's three elements in order to increase marijuana use in your community. You increase its availability, that's by allowing it in, you decrease the perception of risk, if it's legal, it must be okay, and you increase social acceptance of it. And one of, one of the things they told us in June is that when marijuana law first came in in two thousand thirteen, fifty-eight percent of the people agreed that it should be legalized. A year later, after some of these things started happening, that same Gallup poll showed that support for marijuana had dropped from fifty-eight percent to fifty-one percent. The poll in two thousand fifteen hasn't come out yet, but if it dropped at all, it's possible now that less than fifty percent of the people in Colorado favor legalization, even though it is our law today. How are other communities handling it right now? It's been two years since marijuana was legalized. Four percent of communities have imposed a moratorium, which is us, right now. Twenty-four percent have allowed it, and seventy-two percent have prohibited its use. So, and, and many of the communities that, that are allowing this are very small communities that have very limited sources of revenue. So it's almost like we'll try anything approach to raise revenue, and I don't think Brush is in that position, so.
Hi. I had the opportunity over Thanksgiving to visit pueblo, and my mother lives in Penrose, in Fremont County. And they're sorry that this ever passed. It has changed the old pueblo that us Coloradans knew into the barely recognizable pueblo. It's overrun with social problems and public health problems. They're using water, ditch water for marijuana crop, and grow houses. I just wanted to throw that out.
I guess my, my biggest thing that I'd like to just bring out there is, this by all means has not been easy for any of us, I don't think. You know, the moratorium, if we could leave it in place forever, I'd be fine with that, but we have to make a decision. And I've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of visits. I've got people anywhere from no to, this is so huge, you need to leave it up to us. Then again, other people that say, no, we put you in office, you need to make that decision. So whichever way this goes tonight, I'd just like to put it out there that it has not been easy, and it's not a quick, let's do this because this'll just get us off the hook and we'll be done. It has been a tough decision.
I'll make a couple of comments. I've done my own research here, and two simple things. I found some positive outcomes with medical marijuana, for people who have pain, disease, but for recreational marijuana, I haven't found any positive outcomes. I work in a middle school, I work with kids and families, and a lot of their problems go to alcohol use, marijuana use, and drug use, so that's what I found in my research.
Yeah, I'd like to mention also that I have not been contacted by anybody personally, you know. I've not taken any phone calls from anybody, you know, saying you should do this, or this is my vote. I've actually went to people and asked, hey, what's your thoughts on this, since nobody has called me? And some people are still pretty undecided. It's like, well, you know, you make the decision. You know, I guess I've been waiting for somebody to convince me that, why this would be a positive thing for the city of Brush, and I can't say that I've heard anything that, that this would be a positive for, for our, our city. And so as, as I look at some of these statistics as well, you know, and I think it's kind of based on what Rick says, just because it's out there, because it's, it's legal, that people think it's okay regardless of age, you know, it's not, it's not being used by just those that are old enough to use it. It's because it's legal, they think that they can use it anywhere, anyhow, and I guess I'm alarmed at the number of youth that are, that the increase has, the number of youth using marijuana has increased, which of course it certainly wasn't intended for, for them either. So, so that's my thought. I mean, the other, the only other thing I'd like to address as well is that I've heard comments that, that we're ignorant because we don't think that there's drugs in the town. I am not ignorant, I know there is drug use, and we're not, we can't prevent that. What we're addressing is the legalization of marijuana. So I just, I'd like to throw that out there too, you know, we're not ignorant to drug use in Brush, we don't have blinders over our eyes, we know people misuse drugs, people misuse, whether it's marijuana or alcohol, it's being misused. However, legalizing marijuana or allowing the sale of it is another, is an entirely different matter.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to say too, is I'm not naive enough to think that you can't go buy it twelve miles away from Brush. But I don't think that means you also have to throw the welcome mat and invite it in, if you, if you think it's going to harm your community. And I think with the information that we have, we've had hours and hours of community meetings, and the people have continually told us that the marijuana industry isn't something that they want brought into our town. And I, I think we've had enough information that we can make that decision.
I was going to say, as far as I know, the, it's against federal, federal laws, right? So, let's, let's just talk about it, just straightforward, if Republicans get in, the Republicans... If Republicans get in, the Republicans are saying they're going to get rid of us. So, here we'd be, sitting here with this, and then it'll become federal law. I don't know. That's what I understood. Maybe I understood wrong.
Don't know.
I don't either. But anyway, that's what I understood.
And I've had a phrase, since we started these meetings eighteen months ago, and it seems like time has really gone fast, and we're right back in it, I thought, oh, great, we put the moratorium in place, we got a year and a half. Well, time goes by too quick. Because I've had this phrase running around in my head, because I was so proud of the work that Chuck did, and some of the other people was getting the All-American City designation. I think that is so cool, and I know how hard it is to get that designation. Only ten cities in the United States got it, and we were the smallest city, I think, at the time to get that. And since we started talking about this, I can't quit thinking that All-American cities just don't go to pot. You know? I think it fits. Hit it. That's it.
I've heard comments on both sides, a whole string of comments, and for various reasons, different things. There's been classes we've gone to that have, you know, shown the pluses, you know, the minuses and some pluses of it. You know, you were talking about any special information we have on it. And I remember a year and a half ago, up at the CML, Carrot Municipal League Annual Meeting, which they have in Breckenridge, at the start of the meeting, they have a mayor's get-together, where just mayors are in a room, and it's just a question-answer, you know, what kind of problems are you having? And they get together and help to give input from other communities. And there were at least forty mayors, there were probably closer to fifty. And one of them, a year and a half ago or so, was going through this, and so she said, what's it been like in your towns with this? And I just sat there and it was, you know, trying to get the feel for things. And two mayors stood up and said, it hasn't been a problem. It's been, nothing bad has happened, it's not a regulatory mess, it's nothing bad going on with it. And there wasn't anybody in the group that listed troubles with it. So, I'm back to that thing of, you hear both sides. You hear this, you hear that, you hear everything else. And I think in America, you let the people decide when it's into the mess. And that's where I am, is seeing what happens, seeing it, you know, because people have had three years to deal with this, too, and see where we are on this. So, that's my thoughts. Other discussion, other comments? Is there, are we ready to accept a motion, or have a motion brought forth, or where do we stand?
I move we vote as a council tonight whether we should go forward or go to the polls.
I second.
So, what?
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not understanding the motion.
I move that we vote tonight as a council. Right. Which way we want to go, as opposed to going to the polls.
Are you making a motion to prohibit?
I'm only, my first motion is to vote as a council. Then we can, as a second motion, go ahead with voting to prohibit. I can do it that way, he.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm just looking for clarification.
I think we're ready, I think we can act on the issue tonight, I think that's what council, so I would make a motion that we.
We have a motion.
Does it have a second?
So, it has not been seconded.
I did.
You did? Okay, motion and a second. All right, and state the motion again, it's that we.
Councilor Anderson offered a motion that council makes the decision.
So, we eliminate option one, and bring it down to options two or three? All right. Roll call vote.
Mayor Schomburger?
No.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Becker?
Yes.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also like to make a motion that we prohibit manufacturing, testing, retail sales, and cultivation of marijuana inside the city limits of Brush.
Second.
Motion and second. All right, are you ready, roll call vote?
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Becker?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor, Mayor Schomburger?
No. I just thought it should have gone to the vote.
Okay.
All right, I think we are settled.
So, that's the direction of the staff, then, to come up with an ordinance and present it?
Yep, we will direct staff to come up with an ordinance that will be presented, and it will go into effect by June thirtieth. All right. We are done with that. Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go.
All right, moving on to Management 5B, second and final reading of ordinance number eight forty-two dash sixteen.
Okay, this ordinance is, if all of the council remembers, we have a quiet zone application that's out there, and it's, the project's been complete. And so, in the next few weeks, we're hopeful that if everything's done correctly, and all the sign-offs are done, the quiet zone will be in place. However, our city code, we had some of the code that we had in place, it conflicted with having a quiet zone. So, at the last meeting, the council had the first reading of ordinance eight four two dash one six. And so, we're here tonight requesting that second and final reading of that ordinance, so we can get that put in place.
Is there a motion to adopt on second reading and published by title only?
I move that we adopt ordinance number eight forty-two sixteen and publish by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? And roll call vote.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Becker?
Yes.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Mayor Schomburger?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Moving on to C, first reading ordinance number eighteen forty-three dash sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the imposition of a convenience fee. Joanne?
Yes. Council may recall that in 2015, we brought to a work session for council to consider whether we should charge, be allowed to charge a convenience fee for the use of our credit card at the front office area only, at our front desk. And then, we brought it back to the last work session as well, and had some discussion on it. Currently, it's costing us anywhere from three hundred and fifty, this last month was over four hundred dollars in a convenience fee, for us to pay for the fees for people to come in off the street and pay for their court fines, building permits, water bills. And so, we're asking that council allow us to impose a convenience fee to recoup some of those expenses. Currently, it would affect if you, currently, you can use cash or check and the credit card. You'd still be able to use that credit card, and before we ever use the credit card and charge the convenience fee, we'd definitely make customers aware that there will be a convenience fee on this. As far as the utility billing and paying for their bills, they do have that option to use the online bill pay, which uses their credit card, to where they would still, if they use your online bill pay, you will not charge the convenience fee. The city will absorb that fee, because that saves our staff time. So, it's in the long run, it saves the city money. The other two areas that we currently use credit cards is in the recreation department. And if you are online using that, then you do get charged that convenience fee through that company, because that's a separate company that does that. The other area, we have the golf course, and because that's a business, we are not proposing that we charge a convenience fee for people who use their credit cards out there to go golfing or to use the restaurant. So, at this time, we'd like to have council do the reading and move forward with this ordinance on convenience fees.
First action is call for a counselor to introduce the ordinance, and read the ordinance by title.
I'll make a motion for the first reading ordinance number eight forty-three dash sixteen, sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the imposition of a convenience fee for the use of alternative forms of payment to the city.
All right, we have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I think, one thing I'd say is, I think the action that we're trying to do here is probably trying to encourage more people to go online to pay. And we do offer other means of paying that aren't going to charge, that won't charge this fee. So, I don't really see it as an inconvenience to citizens. And we'd really like to, like to free up that time at the desk for people to do other duties that they have, so.
But I do, I don't like convenience fees, I disagree with them, so that's just my stand, is I think that's a part of doing business.
We do have alternatives, though.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Okay. Councilor Baker?
Okay, yes, I don't think we should charge the fee, is that what you're asking?
No, yes, yes is for the fee, no is.
No, no, because I need to get that clarified.
Councilor Becker?
Yes.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Mayor Schomburger?
No.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
The motion carries five to two.
Moving on to the annual Brush Museum contract.
I'm going to present that this evening, because Lance was unable to make it. Since 2007, we have had an agreement with the museum, and that agreement is for the allocating approximately ten thousand dollars for staffing and general museum operations. Sixty-five hundred dollars of that is paid out for a part-time person for operations Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, May through October. That pay, person is paid through the city staff. The other thirty-five hundred is a donation to the museum for them to pay for their general operations, their gas and electric, their phone bills, and any of their displays is the biggest expenses that they have at the museum. There really is no differences in this contract this year from last year, it just needs to do the annual appendix to that agreement.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve the annual Brush Museum contract.
Second.
Second, motion second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilor Becker?
Yes.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Mayor Schomburger?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
Councilor Becker?
You already.
Oh, did I go out of order? Sorry. I thought I said Baker.
I thought I did. I might have.
I gotta clarify.
Baker, Becker.
Becker, Baker.
You're gonna have to go first and last in.
I make a motion we approve disbursements and payroll from January eleventh through twenty, the twenty-fifth of 2016, totaling one hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilor Dykes?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Mayor Schomburger?
Yes.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Bain?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Staff reports. Finance.
I have two items to report on this evening to council. My first is just making council aware, if you may recall back in 2015, when we did our resolution to increase the tax, the trash rates, we also put in that resolution that we would for the next three years, 2016, 17, and 18, do a percentage increase to our trash rates, based on the Denver Boulder CPI. I did review that, the Denver Boulder CPI came in at 1.9 percent. And so, after I applied that, if you're a residential trash user, you will be charged an additional thirty cents per month for your trash. And a ninety cubic yard, or ninety cu, ninety, yeah, a poly cart.
Right, there you go. Ninety gallon.
Ninety gallon, thank you. Is also going to be charged thirty cents for a commercial downtown that just has a ninety gallon poly cart. Across the board, even for our three cubic yards, that average charge increase is thirty cents per pickup. And the other item that I had then was, on January the eleventh, I met with John McGinn about our new proposed water rates. You may recall, he came last year and talked to council. We're now in the final steps of presenting a resolution to council as soon as we've got the final little pieces completed. In February, we're probably looking at doing some public awareness of that water rate increase. And so, at this time, we won't have anything on the work session for water rate increase.
Okay, that was on our agenda, so that's not gonna, okay.
We really had hoped to have this all completed, but then, with our consultants, it's taken longer than what we planned. And Joanne wanted to do a few extra checks on some of the larger businesses, and what that really does to our revenue stream. And that additional time rolls into the new year, and trying to get the meeting set up took some time. But we're going to keep it moving along and keep the council posted on that.
Can you give out some printed examples, like you did last time, I think?
Yes. And that's kind of maybe what part of our public awareness would be, was to invite any of the customers that wanted to know how this new rate increase was going to affect their bills, to be able to come into the city hall and visit with staff, and we could look up their usage and tell them what we would have done based on their 2015 usage. We could do that both for the businesses, large or small, and the residences as well.
I do want to say, I think it's a good idea to tie it to the CPI index, rather than waiting several years and getting behind again, and then having to have a larger increase. I think this is a better way to handle it.
And part of that resolution will increase that as well, will have that as well in that water rate increase.
With the CPI, okay.
Moving down to utilities, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items. With the warmer temperatures that we're currently experiencing, we're getting a lot of snow melt, and we're still getting these frigid nights, and so that's starting to build up, especially on the south side of streets. So, we're trying to clear these ice dams as they occur, but if you happen to run across any, or if you get any calls or concerns about ice dams, please call the front office, and let's get a work order in on that, and get those broke free as soon as we can. Second item will be the Windy Hill Water Facility. There's a community meeting at Drovers tomorrow night between four o'clock and six PM. This is, I encourage anybody who has any questions about the Windy Hill Water Facility to come out and listen. This is their public outreach, their public contact, get everybody to know, there's a lot of rumors out there about what this facility is, and what it's going to do, what it's going to do. This gives them an opportunity to present to the community directly. So, I encourage that if council has any questions or concerns, please attend this meeting tomorrow night out at Drovers. Again, it's at from four to six. Currently, we're working on some concerns, I've studied this application extensively at staff level, we have some concerns. But after tomorrow night's meeting, if you have any additional concerns, please coordinate with Andrea or Monte, and we can sit down a little bit and discuss these things one-on-one.
Dale, what is the outline of what they want to do?
Essentially, there is non-tributary groundwater that is in a very prime geological location out there on Windy Hill. And the intent is, is to pump this water from this geological formation, which is down about one mile. It's a very briny type water, has a lot of chlorides in it, total dissolved solids, it's not suitable for drinking. However, it is suitable for other activities, they can do minor treatment to it, and use it for possible non-potable uses, or manufacturing, or even oil well, oil and gas well stimulation. The second component to this facility will be that they will take this production water that comes from the oil field, and they would bring it out there, they would do some treatments of the petroleum separation, sedimentation of any sands or fines, filter it down to less than ten microns, and re-inject it back down into that same formation for later use in the future.
Dale, one of the things maybe you know, because I've gotten a ton of calls about this, is that, and I don't know if this is rumor, if it's true, I heard that this is a byproduct of some of the oil and gas stuff that they're doing in Weld County, and that Weld County.
And that Weld County Commissioners refused to accept that water in their own county. But it came as a result of some of the oil and gas they're doing there. And it, it kind of sounds like this brackish water that they're talking about that they, they don't agree to put it in their own county, but they decide to dump it in Brush. I know there's got to be more to it than that, but that's the story that I'm hearing.
Correct, that's one of the, that's one of the kernel of, you know, the small kernel of truth in a very large discussion. This water that would be produced, and it was, the intent, without getting into too much detail, is to be used locally in Morton County to help stimulate existing oil and gas wells that are currently not in production. And to, and then we would also recover that water from those wells and bring it back out to Windy Hill. To say that there would not be Weld County production water going to this facility would be incorrect because there would be some that would be there. However, Weld County does have a couple injection sites, I believe there's one, if you go on, Weld County Road seventy-seven as you're headed north to Hereford, there's a actual water treatment facility there at that site. I believe there's another one in and around Bricsdale. So Weld County does have the opportunity to dispose of these wastes. But to say that we wouldn't be taking some of that would be incorrect because we wouldn't be taking some of that waste.
Do we have the underground aquifer maps?
I do have a copy of what our water attorney reviewed as far as Windy Hill applying for non-tributary groundwater status for this facility. And I'm glad to share those.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
And Dale, you've got the electronic copy of the county application?
Yes, there is an electronic copy we have that I can, I can produce. It's sixty-two point six megabytes, so it's not something I particularly prefer to email, you know, because I would grind the city operations to a pulp.
No, it's, it's...
But if you do have a flash drive, we can provide you with a copy.
Right, if any council member wants a copy of that, it's a lot of information. But I really encourage going to that meeting because they're going to give you a lot more information. That's their outreach opportunity, answer the questions that you have. And just to remind everyone, this, it's a county application process for a permit through the county, not the city, because I do have on occasion, people ask me about it, thinking that we're the agency that's running that. But we're just like anyone else, we get the notices, Dale goes to the meetings. And the public outreach tomorrow is going to be very critical to understand the entire picture.
Yeah, and some of us are going to that annual chamber, so there's kind of a conflict, but I think we've made...
You go to that first and you go to the chamber and you get dinner.
Yeah, I think so.
But this meeting from four to six is the company or the people putting it on, the county commissioners, I understand, will not be there.
I, I don't know this, yes, I don't know that information as to whether they'll be there or not.
I, I think it's because of, it's not a...
It's an active application yet, so...
And they need to, you know, not get input other than at their meeting.
It's that quasi-judicial issue we talked about.
Yes, that thing. So, yeah, so, so there will not be a discussion between the county people and them, it's just a presentation.
Dale, where is Windy Hill?
Windy Hill is a location probably, I want to say it's like almost a mile and a half east of Highway seventy-one on Morton County Road Q.
Southeast of you.
Southeast of you, correct. Additionally, we also have hard copies of that application in the city clerk's office. So if there's anybody who's also interested, doesn't, that do not want to take it on a flash drive and clog up their hard drives, they can actually review the paper application, which is in the city clerk's office.
So, so like legally, and I don't know how this works, if they have to come through Brush, but we don't want it, do we have any say in that or do the county can just say, "Sorry, it's going through Brush, this is the shortest route"?
These, these are United States highway transportation systems, we don't have the authority to regulate that kind of traffic. If they decide to come through Brush, they have their legal right to do so, as long as it's a designated truck route.
Where in proximity to the city's well? Where is it the location, the proposed location in proximity to our city's well?
Aquifer, our city's aquifer.
Yeah.
Dale, you have to look at this two-dimensionally. If you look on your X-axis, it's about a mile and a half, two miles east of the city's well field. If you're looking on your Y-axis, it's about a mile below the confining layer for our water, for our water aquifer.
In other words, they're, they're putting it down deeper, Dale, than where our aquifer sits, right?
Correct.
Our, our...
And I would be glad to, and I'd like, and I'll be glad to show you, that's not the one thing that concerns me. The one, our water, the safety of our water supply is not a concern based on what I've reviewed.
Our water supply is several hundred feet down, this is five thousand feet down.
Correct.
And you said it was non-tributary, so it's confined and there's not part, it's not part of the river system that runs to the river underground?
Correct.
Well, one of the things I've heard too, just for information for council, is that, that there were people not wanting us to go in and went to the county meeting on January eleventh. And the county actually, their action on the item was to table the item and to have a third party come in and look at that to study it and give advisement to the county. So there's going to be some time before that happens, I would think.
I've been in several meetings with the county and a lot of the discussions that we've had on this application was one of the reasons they prompted to have a third party look at this as well, an unbiased third party. It, it's very technical, to say the least. And so they're looking for that second opinion.
Thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to marketing.
All right, just two items tonight. Number one, at our stakeholders' meeting today on behalf of the school district, Dr. Bill Wilson had mentioned that the school district is looking at the possibility of a four-day school week. And of course, that's going to impact the community in different ways. And so he, the school district is going to have three different meetings available for the community to come and give their feedback on that, which he would love to gather that information. Which leads me to my second thing, which is I want to encourage everyone to, if, if they are on, online at all, is to follow the city on Facebook for information like that. And it's a very valuable place for just not only information, but updates and things that pertain directly to the community.
How often do you update that, Taylor?
Very often, as news comes. Many, many times a week, I put something on there.
City clerk.
Okay, just reminding everyone that signed up to the Brush Area Chamber of Commerce, their annual meeting tomorrow night at the Carroll Building. And also in your packet was the current report from our Way and Wind kiosk that's located at the Eastmore County Clinic. And Brush, City of Brush Ebenezer and Banner Health are partners in this. And to date, we have four hundred and fifty-eight community members that have signed in. And so far, we've lost two thousand, three hundred, seventy-six pounds. So it's working. Yeah, very good.
Very good. Community development, Karen.
I just had one item and I wanted to remind the community and any of council that sits on Planning Commission that next Monday at five-thirty in this room, the Planning Commission will be meeting. We have an application in front of them to evaluate further subdivision of Lot Three of Castle Rock subdivision. This is the property at the southeast corner of Hospital Road and I seventy-six. So Planning Commission will hear that application next Monday at five-thirty. And then city council reviews that same application on February eighth.
City administrator.
Okay, a couple items. First, just letting the city council know that last week, the chief of police resigned. That's after thirty years, thirty-four years of service. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. With that vacancy now, the city's human resources team is starting the process of putting together the recruitment package for a new police chief. And we do plan probably as soon as next week to get that released. So you'll hear more about that. And as the, the process moves along, I'll keep the city council posted on that. See, second item is, I did receive a letter from the rural fire district saying that they're withdrawing from the construction project of the fire department building, but would like to continue to pay rent to the city for housing the district's fleet. A little bit of a setback, but we're still going to continue working with the fire chief and come up with some solutions for that. I did give a copy of the letter, each council member has a copy of that. But those are the two updates I had for you to make.
Monte, on that, on that fire protection letter, since we just received that information, it, it sounds like in the letter that, you know, the cost went from eight hundred thousand to one point two because the fire department presented to us expanded building on that. It's, it sounds like that was one of their main reasons that the cost had inflated to one point two.